The August 15, 2022 City of Andalia Council Meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no minutes to approve. We have no communications petitions and awards, nor do we have a public hearing. And that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment.
Good evening. My name's David Todd. I live at 156 Colebrook Drive, Vandelia. I'm here about the ramp. If you may have forgotten the copies that I left earlier today, I said to pass them on to council members back in 2002, I believe it was, when Mr. Suker was city manager. We asked him about how the various residents were going to get to Kroger. And he brought up about taking up a petition. And my wife and I did that, and we succeeded. We only had one, maybe three people that didn't want to sign it. Well, over time, it's been great, the pathway. Now we have semis that are blocking where Dollar Tree is. There's a marked crosswalk that goes to the path. And you cross there, go into Dollar Tree, Kroger, and the various other businesses. Well, back on September 22, 2021, my wife went to Kroger, had five bags on her wheelchair. My wife's disabled permanently. I've been married 52 years, going on 53. She came home, she was bowed in tears and very upset. She sat there for 30 minutes, she said, waiting to go across the crosswalk. And there was a semi trailer there. A lady from Dollar Tree came out and said, honey, what can I do for you? And she said, I can't cross to get to the walk. So she dialed the police. Well, Officer Thomas comes out, and the only thing she can say is, it's not against the law. Well, I went on the internet today, and it says it's unlawful to block a crosswalk. So on September 22, pardon me, on October 21, my wife sent an email to the city manager. And I was in the room when she did. And she got a confirmation that it was received. And she asked him to please kindly put a signage where the semis won't block the crosswalk. You don't want to go around them, and you could flip your wheelchair and vice versa. You'd get injured. She never got a response. So in caring for her and the other various things in our days as you people have, we have things that we have to get done. So finally, she said, when are you going to council and talk to them? I said, I'm going tonight. Mr. Mayor, do you know of a Becky Swanson? Do you know of Becky Swanson?
I'm actually, I'm not the mayor.
Oh.
That's the mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry. Do you know of Becky Swanson?
Um.
In a wheelchair?
No.
She said she knows you. She lives in Vandelia Village. She's, her and another girl come from Vandelia Village way across town to Kroger. So I, I'm at Kroger, that's my second home, is probably most of your are too. I stopped her one day, and I told her what was going on there. And she said, tell the mayor that him and I went to school, high school together. And I said, well, maybe that'll get things moved along faster. So you don't remember her.
The name sounds familiar. That was a long time ago.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, all our memories are fading gradually, but she remembers you.
I do have some background, if I may. The, I just received this today, and I'm sorry.
I brought it.
And I'm sorry not to interrupt, but I was out, and I got this right at the beginning of the day. There is the private multi-use trail that runs up along the east side of Kroger. That's on private property. And so probably one of the things in Officer Thomas's response is that there's crosswalks in the right-of-way. This is actually a crosswalk that is coming into the backside that doesn't come into the public right-of-way. And so that being just purely on private property, it isn't necessarily something that could be handled from a criminal enforcement standpoint. I just checked my email. I apologize. I don't know if it got caught in a filter or what, but I don't have any record of that email. What I will do is I will work with the assistant city manager, who generally works with our business contacts. I will have them talk about where the semi trucks are parking in order to hopefully get that message out there. That is private property, and so the city is limited on what it's able to enforce. I do know that last year, we had park and rec maintenance staff. There were some concerns that were brought up regarding dead branches and overgrowth. We did go onto the property and remove those to make sure there was safe passage. I understand there's a little bit of overgrowth there. Rather than go onto that property and do that work, I'm going to try to attempt to have the owners of the former Midland Atlantic property, that complex, to push that back. If that doesn't work, we'll go on-site, and we'll just make sure that stays clear so that it's easy and accessible for the residents from that neighborhood.
So from what I get getting from you, you have nothing to really say about the crosswalk. They can block it. People that are disabled in wheelchairs, that's the only grocery store, the main grocery store here. They're not to go around the semi. Then you get traffic that you cannot see. You don't want to go over the dip there and get injured.
I, I believe that, I believe that what I'm attempting to tell you is that while there may not be the enforcement aspect where it's about penalty, that I think that your statement, I understand what your statement is, and I think it's a very valid one. And that same type of message about providing access to neighbors so that they can be customers and have it be safe and reliable for them is what we'll bring to the management who owns that complex and also the people at Kroger and Dollar General.
We're talking about the crosswalk, the street, the street itself there. I'm not going up on, on the pathway. I'm talking about the crossbars or the lines there.
Oh, I, I, I'm sorry.
The semis aren't.
I believe that it was due to this, and this was about the walkway.
Well, I wanted to make it clear that my wife, approximately 370 some houses we went to and got that driven through when Mr. Suker was here. The semis are parking on the street. If you, any of you go by there, you've been to Kroger, there's the Dollar Tree. There's parallel lines, I would call them, that go across to the Dollar Tree. Semis, I've talked to one driver. He had his windows covered. So I took my camera, and I went around. Well, evidently, he's got cameras. And he saw me, said, what are you doing? And I told him. And then he starts his Spanish speaking like, like I'm dumb. I don't speak Spanish, but he knew what I was talking about. And he says, well, I'm waiting on another truck driver. But this goes on, I've got pictures. I, in other words, I'm at the point, I know what my wife's had to go through over her 52 years, or the 52 years we've been married. If I have to see it here in Vandelia, I'll take it a step further.
So Chief Oldhouse, Lieutenant Walker, they're actually behind you. Would you gentlemen be so kind as to inspect the area or delegate that, and then ensure that the appropriate parking ordinances are being enforced? And, and Ms. Holloway, will you please reach out to the business proprietors and try to ensure that that communication is relayed to delivery drivers? Thank you.
I had something too. They go in El Toro, they park the rigs there, and they go in El Toro. So they're in there for quite a bit, quite a while. So what, you're, you're not gonna, there's going to be no signage that says no parking? Where they can see it?
We'll start with the preliminary investigation, and then we'll make a determination from there.
Which means what, if you don't mind telling me in simple terms?
Yep. I will, I will have, I will have Ms. Holloway reach out to the business owners and the proprietors. Lieutenant Walker is going to give you a business card so that you can follow up with him directly. The police division will conduct an inspection as to where the portions are and what laws can be enforced. And then we'll put out a bulletin so that operationally, the shifts are watching that and make sure that they move people along and enforce the parking ordinance.
I appreciate it, but I don't see where it's going to be effective.
Well, we appreciate you bringing this to our attention. And as our city manager said, our staff is willing to work with you to get this resolved. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? All right, next we'll move on to the city manager's report. We have information items. Mr. Wynn?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The, let's see, city offices will be closed on Monday, September 5, for Labor Day. The rec center will be open 7:00 a.m. to noon for the fitness area and gymnasium and track only. The next council meeting will be on Tuesday, September 6, 2022. And that will begin at 7:00 p.m. The regular meeting will begin at 7:00 p.m. We will set the study session time once we're more aware of the agenda which is set. That's all, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of the night, that being Resolution 22-R-54. And as we discussed in our study session, I think it was decided that several members of council would like to table this so we could get a little bit further or more information before we vote.
I, Mayor, we will, since it's on the agenda, we'll need to read it and then have a motion to table.
Okay.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an automatic mutual aid response agreement with the city of Dayton with respect to the Dayton International Airport and surrounding commercial industrial areas.
Thank you. Mr. Wynn?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city of Vandelia maintains an automatic mutual aid response, or AMAR, agreement with the city of Dayton, covering responses to the Dayton International Airport and to the commercial and industrial areas that are in the city of Dayton and around the airport. A similar agreement is currently in place, and I am requesting that the agreement be modified to include fire responses into the airport property. Many of these properties are being covered by Butler Township through a separate agreement. The city of Vandelia provides mutual aid to Butler Township and vice versa. This agreement would allow the city of Vandelia to continue responding with the ladder truck and as a third or greater medic when available during an emergency. The agreement is contingent upon the availability of the Vandelia Fire Division staff and apparatus.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Uh, Your Honor, I'm going to move, would like to move that we table Resolution 22-R-54 until our next scheduled meeting for further discussion.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Fars that we table Resolution 22-R-54 until our next meeting. Are there any comments?
Uh, yes. I just would like to say that, you know, we've gone three times in the last six years. We have the ability to say no. It's, it's not a big issue as far as our resources, and it, I admit that I haven't been on council when there's been previous dealings with the city of Dayton, but I just think there's a large degree of animosity every time the city of Dayton is mentioned. And we, if we're going to have a cooperative working understanding with them, I just think we maybe start to need to compromise a little bit, but that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
No.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
No.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Ooh, that was Vice Mayor Lewis, pardon me. And Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 5 to 2. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-55. Mr. McDonald?
Resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the purchase of various hardware and software components for the 2022 server upgrade project at a total price of $165,310.17.
Thank you. Mr. Wynn?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city's main file and application servers are on a five-year replacement schedule, with the last upgrade occurring in 2016. The current equipment has reached the end of its useful life in its current role and will be repurposed for non-critical services. The proposed equipment will meet the projected future growth during the next five-year equipment cycle and is supported by the manufacturer and is compatible with modern software and security updates, assuring that the city will be in compliance with applicable agencies and ensuring maximum uptime. The project specifications for the 2022 server upgrade project were published to the city's website and sent to several vendors. The city advertised and received proposals from nine vendors and selected the best proposals from each project category based on cost reliability and features. The amount budgeted for the project is $200,000. IT manager Davey is recommending the proposals from CDWG and Simply Nas as the lowest and best bid prices. Pricing for much of the equipment is included in cooperative purchasing agreements for the state of Ohio from the source well purchasing contract from which Ohio municipalities may purchase equipment and software. Therefore, I am recommending that council waive formal bidding and purchase the 2022 server upgrade equipment and software at a total cost of $165,310.17 from the vendors mentioned in the tally that was reported and is included in your packet.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 22-R-55.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Councilwoman Fars that we approve Resolution 22-R-55 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-56.
A resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Programs, and authorizing additional action is necessary for the city to participate in such programs with respect to the Clyde Place and Cyril Court Reconstruction Project.
Thank you. Mr. Wynn?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution is necessary in order to be able to apply. We always seek to extend taxpayer dollars. One of those ways is through low-interest loans and also grant applications. This is an Ohio Public Works Commission application for Clyde Place and Cyril Court running from Vista Drive to Attica Street. As Director Cron reported, it's likely that by the time this gets through the cycle, construction would probably take place in 2024. The estimate for the project is $892,501. A significant amount of surveying was done by Mr. Cron and Mr. Chad Baumann. And for our part of the project, which is in-kind, we'll be asking for funding for 50% of the project with 25% being grant funding and 25% being a zero-interest loan.
Thank you. Can I have a motion? Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 22-R-56 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve Resolution 22-R-56 as presented. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-57.
Resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Programs, and authorizing additional action is necessary for the city to participate in such programs with respect to the airport access, airport access road, North Brown Bridge Deck Rehabilitation Project.
Thank you. Mr. Wynn?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is for the airport access North Brown Bridge Deck that's over Stone Quarry Road. This fits in with our enhanced infrastructure and fiscal sustainability policy goals. We'll be pursuing with your approval from this resolution to apply for and submit the application. The preliminary engineer's construction cost estimate is about $384,700 with a 10% contingency, bringing it up to $423,200. We've got $10,000 in-kind cost. That would be our contribution for staff to manage the project. We previously approved the contract with LJB in the amount of $20,067.55 for the design, which is currently underway. The total cost of the project will be $453,238, and we will be requesting a grant in the amount of $200,000 for this OPWC project.
Thank you. Can I have a motion? Make a motion that we approve Resolution 22-R-57.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilman Follak to approve Resolution 22-R-57 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-58.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into a memorandum of understanding with Vandelia Butler Schools regarding crossing guards.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. For many years, the school crossing guard program has been the responsibility of the Vandelia Division of Police for staffing and maintaining at the two elementary schools in the city, namely Helkey and Demmett Elementary. Over the past year, there have been some significant challenges relating to staffing, the need for flexibility, the profile of person who's able to fulfill that in the morning and in the afternoon. We've met with, and that's caused us to deploy a police officer to fill in sometimes on very short notice, which interrupts operations. We've worked with the school district and Superintendent O'Leary, who has indicated that they're willing to accept the responsibilities for staffing the crossing guard positions with staff members from the respective elementary schools. In return, the city will reimburse the school district for the associated costs for staffing the positions. The total cost for the 2022 to 2023 school year will be approximately $8,646 for three crossing guards, which is less than the current budgeted amount for city staff and also will free up staff time. We've included in MOU, a memorandum of understanding, with the accompanying appendix of schedules in the school district for certain stipends. And so I would just seek your permission to negotiate and enter into that agreement with the school district.
Can I have a motion? Make a motion that we approve Resolution 22-R-58.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis that we approve Resolution 22-R-58 as presented. Are there any comments?
Just that I'm glad that we're seeing that we continue this program. I think it's very important, safety-wise for all children. I know my children always used to see Cheryl Watson every day, and she's quite dedicated person. And I know that there are other staff members from the schools that will be just as dedicated to watch out for those children. And I know that usually the crossing guard is some of the first folks that the children see. So I think it's a very important position, that we're still providing service or helping.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-59. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into a purchase and sale agreement for 80 acres of land from Montgomery County.
Thank you. Mr. Wynn?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. This resolution authorizes the city manager to negotiate and enter into a sale agreement for 80 acres of land from Montgomery County on Webster Street. Montgomery County has agreed to pretty much donate the land. That's generally north of the Animal Resource Center to the city of Vandelia without deed restrictions. The city's conducted an environmental study and survey. The purpose of the land transfer is to secure land for a possible public regional safety training facility that would be collaborative with multiple governments and police and fire and additional public uses possibly, with the option for private uses as well, should council determine that's the best opportunity.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 22-R-59 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve Resolution 22-R-59 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have ordinances in their first reading, and the first one being Ordinance 22-32. Mr. McDonald?
Declaring the improvement to certain parcels in the city to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5709.40B, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purpose for which those service payments may be expended, and authorizing school compensation payments.
Thank you. Mr. Wynn?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I bring these to you, the next three, 22-32-33 and -34, as tax increment financing proposals in two separate study sessions. We've discussed tax increment financing. This ordinance declares that certain land within Stone Quarry crossings is to be part of a tax increment financing portion. Parcels within the Capstone TIF area will make service payments in lieu of taxes that will be, that will enable the city to make public infrastructure improvements that will directly benefit the parcels within the TIF area. I would point out that this is what we call a non-school TIF, meaning that the Vandelia Butler City School District and also the CTC are made whole and able to receive the complete tax revenue for these portions that are eligible under that TIF. You'll note that in a prior version that was sent out prior to council, there was some boilerplate language that was mistakenly left inside of the ordinances. That has been taken out. It would appear that our, not Jerry, but the attorney that we had, not Mr. McDonald, but the attorney that we had left that in from another project, that has been updated to be correct. One of the questions also being about this is that you'll notice that we have the area where we're seeing development around the Capstone Way, the areas to the south in Fieldstone. There's no active applications or discussions that are going on for that development. I would anticipate with council's approval that this either be extended or that a different TIF be made for these areas if there is development. The purpose of this being that the city is able to capture in years, in years 16 through 30 for the development, for roadway improvements, for signalization, utilities, the type of activities that we've put, that we've put into this legislation. And so what that'll allow us to do is extend taxpayer funds from other income tax revenues or utility payments. And so this very much is a way that the city is able to get people who develop to make sure that they provide their fair share and that the city's able to use that fair share in order to mitigate any of the negative impacts that could happen for this portion. So the TIF payments will be used for the infrastructure programs that are listed in there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 22-32 in its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Councilman Follak to approve Ordinance 22-32 in its first reading. Are there any comments?
I have a question real quick. For both 22-32 and 22-33, I know in the exhibits, and I, I know you mentioned the boilerplate that was taken out, but when it lists West National Road and Peters Pike and then Dogleg in 33, are we therefore limited to that?
No, you are not. There's the other portions that are in. As part of the requirement in the notice, we have to list specific, specific projects.
Okay. So, sorry, but I mean, so we could use, let's say, the Dogleg, the Innovation
Industrial.
Industrial Area TIF for future US 40.
Yes.
Development or improvements and/or airport access. Area TIF for future US 40 development or improvements and/or Airport Access Road.
Yes.
Because that borders both of these TIF areas, correct?
Yes, sir. And really, the argument just has to be made that, is it reasonable that these funds are being used to somehow service those businesses? And so if it's not immediately adjacent, you know, we would look at our, we would say we have this proposal for some sort of infrastructure, typically roadway, something relating to utility maintenance, and we would check that with our law director to make sure that it's completely in compliance. But it's not just limited to the gray-out area, so you are correct.
Okay, thank you.
One quick question, and I should have asked this a long time ago. Similarly, in a TIF area, if the city wants to incentivize a particular business or not, can the city withhold TIF monies for infrastructure improvements or advocate a different type of infrastructure improvement?
I'm not 100% sure that I follow. I am going to try. The, when, when monies are captured for...
For that particular area.
For that particular area, it's used for infrastructure. If there's a broader economic development agreement that city council wishes to leverage general fund dollars, for instance, that would be in a separate pot from what this legislation is. This legislation, what's really nice about it is, in lieu of dipping into your safe and stable funds for your infrastructure, you're capturing additional property tax revenue that you wouldn't otherwise have, that would probably go downtown and be used in some other community, even though it was levied in this one.
And my thought was, I have a business X, and I'm not necessarily fond of business X, so I agree, as my infrastructure, I'm going to put a one-lane road in there, and that's all I'm going to do as a city, meeting the rudimentary or basic city requirements. Now, let's say this is just a wonderful business, and we'd say, sure, I'll build a five-lane road into that business. Is that a way to incentivize or control building or not building?
Certainly, there's always maintenance that is to be done. Every proposal comes to council for any expenditures where there are significant and substantial infrastructure improvements, so that would be the prerogative of council.
If I understand, you wouldn't be able to capture that until after year 16 anyway, correct? Any of those monies?
Yeah. These are, these are typically for this area, a 30-year TIF. The city would not see, realize that.
You wouldn't get your payback.
Actually, until year 17, because we collect, the county collects in the rears.
Right, but it's going to, in other words, it's not going to be able to use to incentivize or decentivize.
No, no, not at this time. This is actually, this legislation is meant to be, you know, we think about goal horizons and fiscal sustainability of the city, and what this is meant to do is look past our five-year forecast that we have in our budget and make sure that we're thinking 15 and 30 years out for long-term sustainability. And so the impact of which way this goes, the revenue would stay with the city in those years. It's not something that goes to the businesses that might develop there. And all the while, the schools are not adversely impacted by the tax increment financing, because we want to make sure that they have what they need and that they benefit from development.
Thank you. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Next, we have Ordinance 22-33 in its first reading.
And for anybody who's just listening to me, they might think I accidentally read the previous one, because all three of these are identical except for the attachment. 22-33, declaring the improvement to certain parcels in the city to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5709.40b, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purpose for which those service payments may be expended and authorizing school compensation payments.
Thank you. And the previous description that city manager gave will stand. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance 22-33 in the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve Ordinance 22-33 in its first reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Ordinance 22-34 in its first reading. Mr. Wynn, or, excuse me, Mr. McDonald.
Declaring the improvement to certain parcels, parcels in the city to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5709.40b, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purpose for which those service payments may be expended and authorizing school compensation payments.
Thank you. And again, the city manager's description stands for this ordinance also. Do I have a motion?
Move that we approve Ordinance 22-34 in its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Councilman Blakeslee to approve Ordinance 22-34 in its first reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have one ordinance in its second reading, that being Ordinance 22-29. Mr. McDonald.
An ordinance approving, approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances and resolutions as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption and publication of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances and repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith.
Thank you. Mr. Wynn.
Thank you, Your Honor. This matter is generally housekeeping. We do this pretty much every year. The ordinance approves the editing and inclusion of ordinances and resolutions that have been passed by council since the last update of the codified ordinances. This update will codify all pertinent legislation passed by council during 2021, as well as incorporating amendments to the Ohio Revised Code.
Thank you. And since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I'll open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on Ordinance 22-29, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 22-29 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Ordinance 22-29 in its second reading. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. We have one emergency ordinance, that being Ordinance 22-31. Mr. McDonald.
An ordinance approving individual assessment amounts and directing the finance director or her designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Wynn.
Thank you, Your Honor. The emergency ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts related to stormwater fees, trash collection, delinquents, sewer, and water.
Thank you. And since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve Ordinance 22-31 as an emergency. Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Follak to approve Ordinance 22-31 as an emergency. Any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have reports from boards and commissions, where we have a variance for a front porch at 354 Halcyon Avenue. Mr. Wynn.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The applicant, Mr. Richard Runyon, has requested a variance to allow an eight-foot-by-20-foot covered porch in the RSF3 zoning district. Per code, if a porch extends across more than 25% of the width of the facade, the entire porch or deck shall meet the minimum building setback requirements for principal buildings. Don't see any problem with this. Board of Zoning Appeals voted four to zero to recommend approval of the variance.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the variance for the front porch at 354 Halcyon Avenue to allow the front porch within 17 feet of the front property line.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Councilman Blakeslee to approve the variance for the front porch at 354 Halcyon. Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have the July bill listing in the amount of $6,210,097, and the list of the July expenses over $50,000. We also have the July purchase card detail in the amount of $23,895.35. That brings us to council comments. Mr. McDonald.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Wynn.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor, other than, other than I just want to thank our public safety, our parks, our public works people, everybody there, you all for being involved in supporting Butler Township, all of our residents, the entire community, the schools. I think, I think there's a lot of leaders in this community that showed their true colors, and it's something to be proud of.
Thank you. Councilwoman Woods.
Yes, I was able to attend the prayer event Monday and was so impressed with all the attendance there, with the fact that the schools allowed that to happen in their facility, and everybody, you know, the clergy who spoke were, were very good, but wanted to say that Kelly Case really talked to the kids about how to deal with their emotions and, and work through those things, and I just thought that it was so impressive that she could do that for our community, and everyone there who participated needed that, so.
All right, thank you. Councilman Blakeslee.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilman Follak.
Just to echo what Mr. Wynn and Councilwoman Woods has said, also was attending at the prayer vigil Monday evening, and the turnout was incredible. It's unfortunate that it has to take that large, that type of event for that to happen, but I think everyone across the community that was there showed a great amount of support for both families, and also just to echo the thanks to our public safety personnel that not only responded that day with Butler Township personnel, but also stepped up to the plate that evening and in the days that followed and supported Butler Township by providing assistance to them and their residents who still needed police and fire and EMS protection, so thank you for that. The only other thing I have is, if, I know, I think we're a couple, I think it was because of COVID, but if we could put back on the radar the Boards and Commissions' recognition event, I think, I think we had one scheduled or ready to go in 2020, and we had to postpone it because of COVID, and I'd just like to see that back, you know, on the cycle, so if it's something that we could look at doing here in the near future, please. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fars.
Not to copy everybody, but I think everywhere you go, whether it's your club that you belong to, your church you belong to, the whole community was so supportive of the two families, and I just think that's so important for a small town like ours to feel that in each direction you go.